Okay. I'd like to call a curriculum and evaluation committee meeting to order. It's Monday, October 15th. It is now 6:05 and we are in the North Boardroom. Ms. Van Twyver is here. Ms. Raymond is not. Ms. Timmons is here. Ms. Porter is not. Ms. Porter has another meeting this evening, one of those...
Strategic plan.
Ms. Dr. McKinney is here. And that's it. Do I got everybody? Do I have everybody? I think I do. Okay, so this evening... Mrs. Oden.
Thank you.
President of the board. Sorry.
That's okay.
Hey, my glasses are all foggy. I'll blame it on that. So tonight, we have three things on our agenda. The first one of which is the high school program of studies, changes and additions, also called footsteps. The CTE math and EL tech ed pilot courses discussion. The SAT questionnaire, which is a discussion. And then vaping health curriculums. A discussion on that. So, Dr. McKinney, please, you want to start off? Ms. Raymond just arrived.
I apologize.
We do have a quorum. We had one before, but we're now a super quorum. Thank you.
I apologize, Mrs. Raymond.
Hey, I was late. I beat you by two minutes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, well, it's one of those days. You're all ready?
Ready when you are.
On a rip.
Madam Chair, I'd like to invite Lori Koto, who's the Director of Guidance at Nashua South, to begin the discussion on the program of studies.
Welcome. Glad to have you with us, this yearly event that we have.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. So, for those who haven't been in one of these meetings before, we basically have, you know, we sent you the course additions and changes to footsteps. And we're going to have our head teachers for most of these changes come and speak directly about their changes. So, yeah, so without further ado, I'll call Angela Walsh for art.
Hello. Tonight, we just want to present a name change for a course that's currently called Advanced Art. And we are requesting to change that to Studio Art to avoid some confusion. We have two courses with the name or with the word advanced in them, Advanced Drawing and then Advanced Art. And we've had some students sign up for the wrong course. They're supposed to take Advanced Drawing before they take Advanced Art. So by changing it to Studio Art, it should eliminate some of that confusion. Any questions?
No, but it sounds pretty much straightforward. Name changes are easy.
You have a question?
Oops, sorry, Ms. Timmons.
Yes, Madam Chair, I noticed that you have grade 10, 11, 12. What about the ninth grade? They don't take that particular course?
They would have to take Advanced Drawing...
Okay.
...before they can take Advanced...
Oh, okay, so that's leveled honors, but it doesn't say grade nine. So, just looking at this, is what grade nine is left off?
Right. They're not, they wouldn't be able to take the Studio Art course, which is now called Advanced Art.
Okay.
Sculpting in what medium do you teach?
I teach photography and art history.
Well, the course offers sculpture?
Yes, that is one of the units in the curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, the English department couldn't be here tonight, so I'm representing them for their change, which is just a level change for mythology. They'd like to add the honors level to this course. It's primarily been an extension level course, but the honors section just allows more students to take the course. So that was the reason for their change. Any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. Going quick. All right. So, James, do you want to take the next mic and talk about math? This is James Graham, head teacher for North.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, very well.
Loud and clear. I'll back up.
That's all right.
So, I'm here about two changes. I'll start with the smaller one first, which is in Java programming. This is just a change of the course description. If you look at the papers in front of you, you'll notice the final sentence there. "This course builds a strong foundation necessary to succeed in AP Computer Science A." It's really just there to clarify the purpose of the course, why it's there. It's a course that builds that foundation necessary in order to succeed in AP Computer Science. And we've had students sign up for it who weren't fully aware of that. So this is really just to clarify. Any questions on that one? No? Okay. The second one, which is probably the more significant of the two changes, is that to full-year algebra. And what we've decided to do is take full-year algebra and split it into two separate courses that are each a semester long. In essence, what we've done is we've taken full-year algebra. It'll stay the same as far as the curriculum that we cover. But what it does is it allows us to build in flexibility into the schedule so that students who have normally had to wait until the beginning of the next school year in order to take this course can now take it. It benefits a couple groups of students in particular, three of which I'll make note of. The first is students who are taking honors Algebra I in the fall and fail. There is no way for them to be switched into full-year algebra currently because of the way we give the credits. They would get two credits for one semester in the spring, should they do that, which is why we can't currently do it. So those students would have to not take a math class in that spring even though they failed it in the fall, and then take full-year algebra the next year if they weren't going to take it in summer school. What that does is it's taking a student who would typically be on an honors track, and it's pretty much guaranteeing that they're not going to be able to pass Algebra I until the very end of their sophomore year, which even if they were to double up, would not be able to catch up to their fellow classmates, take AP Calc. The other students it would affect is anybody taking pre-algebra in the fall, their freshman year. That's a semester course, so when they finish that up, if, even if they wanted to continue with math, they can't take Algebra I, which is the next course up. And they can't take any of our other math courses because it requires Algebra I in order to take it. So they're stuck waiting until the following fall. These are students who we already know have gaps, and now we're asking them to take full-year algebra rusty. It also eliminates one potential semester where they could take a math credit to have that opportunity, so that they now have one fewer semester. They really only have seven potential semesters to take a math course in order to get their three, which for a lot of these students is a struggle, especially those who are ELL, who might take ELL math first and then take pre-algebra. If it doesn't quite line up, they might be taking pre-algebra their sophomore year, meaning that they would be juniors at the earliest if they were in Algebra I. The third type of student this could potentially affect is the student who's in full-year algebra currently in the fall. They fail in the fall, and now they're stuck in this class all spring. And while they still, in theory, could pass the course in the spring, there will probably be gaps by the time they move up, which is not going to be the best situation for them moving forward. But on top of that, it's very likely that they'll probably fail in the spring as well. So what this would allow us to do is offer the flexibility to take Algebra I Part One in the spring and then finish it up in the fall the following year. That flexibility will allow these students to have all eight semesters as a potential option to take a math class.
Sounds like a much-needed change.
Yeah, I think so as well.
And a good one.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to skip...
Oops, sorry. We're going to skip the, we're going to wait to go to do the Nashua Technology Center until the end, so we're going to skip right to PE, Phys Ed.
Skip, skip, skip.
Sorry. So this is Jason Robey, our head teacher for Phys Ed and Health.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good.
All right. Thanks for having me here tonight. So, we have a couple of things in the Phys Ed health realm that we need, we would like to take a look at. But before we do, I would like to give you an overview of our current practices so you know what we are, in essence, trying to change. So, at the Phys Ed, at the high school level, we offer a freshman class called Sport Education. We offer a sophomore class, or a 10th grade class, that is called Fit for Life. And that goes opposite of the health class. So a student in their sophomore year will take Fit for Life and then take a health class. And then we offer two classes called Lifetime Activities I, which is a quarter class, and Lifetime Activities II, which is a semester class. In looking at the Lifetime Activities II class, we decided that we wanted to make a description change of the class and also a prerequisite change for the class, specifically because we were really doing the same thing in Lifetime II that we were doing in Lifetime I. We were just doing it for 90 days. And so, we also had some gaps, we felt, in the teaching. A lot of times, we look at sports and athletics as a way to stay physically fit, but when you look at the five components of being physically fit, they include muscular strength, muscular endurance, cardiovascular endurance, flexibility, and body fat composition. Nowhere in there does it say anything about dribbling a basketball, or being able to throw a baseball, or being able to, you know, run a four-minute mile. It just talks about those things. And so what we thought we would, we wanted to do, because it's an unleveled class, and we are going to be able to have 40 students in the class, the prerequisite change, you'll have to take Sport Education as a freshman still. You'll have to take Fit for Life as a sophomore. And you'll have to take Lifetime Activities I. But it is a means-to-an-end class in that when a student, as a junior or senior, takes this class, they will end up being able to develop their own fitness program. They will concentrate more on weight room activities, more activities that involve those five components of being physically fit that I spoke about. Those are the things that, the gaps that we have, so to speak, where, yes, we have kids that are physically active, but not everybody likes to play basketball. Not everybody likes to play tennis. Not everybody likes those things. But every student has the right to be physically fit, to be active. And so this is one of those classes where we feel if we change the name of, or the description of that class, there'll be some students that fit into that, into that realm of PE more than just kind of the mainstream sport-type thing. So that's the, that's kind of the first one. I don't know if there's any questions on that one.
Yes, I have one. This would make it so they had, well, four semesters of activity, of physical activity or something like that, right?
So, so you would have a Fit for Life, which is, which is a quarter, and Sport Ed, which is a quarter. So that would be a semester.
Okay.
Lifetime Activities, which is a quarter. And then the Fit for Life II, which, part of the thing going into this was, we wanted to change Lifetime II to a quarter rather than a semester. Part of that was because we were originally told that in order to add one, you have to take one away. And so we were kind of thinking if we add our, the next class that we'll talk about after this one, if we could take that Lifetime II and make it a Lifetime I or a Lifetime I length, 45 days as opposed to 90. So in essence, yes, you would, we would have two full semesters.
Two full semesters?
Yes.
And it's not a requirement for graduation?
It is.
It is all...
It is a requirement. You need one credit of physical education to graduate.
Okay.
And so what we have found is that students will generally take the Sport Ed. Students will then take their Fit for Life, and they, at that point, have met their graduation requirements. A lot of times, what ends up happening is, is we still have kids that are very interested in staying physically fit, being physically active. The problem is, is when you have block scheduling, a lot of times, let's be honest, there's nowhere to put some of the students. And so they get lumped into a situation where they have to take a games-based class or an activity-based class that they might not want to take. So in order to continue to get them to learn, because a healthy mind is a smart mind, right? If, I never saw a brain walk itself to class. Exercise stimulates the brain.
I don't mind it.
Right? But, but the point is, is that there's a reason why companies and businesses have workout gyms and facilities, these, you know, these big, these big corporations, they have these facilities in their, in their offices, because they want to stimulate the folks to obviously stay later and work longer, but also to work out, to be physically fit, because studies have shown that, you know, the results that these folks are putting forward largely in part because they are physically fit. They are active. And it's going to empower our kids. It's going to give them tools in their toolbox for the long haul, where they're not going to go into a best fitness someday, and they're not going to have to go up and say, excuse me, I need a personal trainer to show me what to do. They're going to have those tools in their toolbox to be able to do it themselves. And so that's part of the gap that I'm, that I'm talking about now, where we have kids that don't necessarily have that ability. They don't want to play games. They don't want to be, you know, they want to be physically active, but we're not giving them those tools. We're actually a little bit behind when it comes to this. There are a lot of school districts that already do this. And so it's our belief that by doing this, we're going to help our student, our students greatly.
Well, two semesters out of eight, right? Do they, can they repeat these classes? Or, you know, the physical fitness is big time this time, you know, this day and age. And two semesters, for me, I would forget what I got.
Well, that's why the Lifetime class is not until you, it's only for juniors and seniors.
Oh, okay.
And the prerequisite would be you have to, you have to have participated and passed Sport Ed as a freshman, Fit for Life as a sophomore, and Lifetime Activities I as a junior or senior in order to be eligible to take Lifetime II. And so this is really for those students that are serious about continuing on, and it just gives them another option as opposed to playing games. And it's a little bit more focused on, you know, why, why do we need to be physically fit? How can we train our bodies? How can we exercise on our own? We actually have some new software that we're piloting with some of our sports teams called Platform. And the students use their cell phones, and the workouts are right there on the phone for them. And if a student doesn't have a cellphone, you can put as many as five kids on one cellphone to do their workouts. And every time you achieve a new milestone, you plug it into your phone, and it changes your workout. It adapts your workout. And the workouts can be programmed by us as teachers or coaches, and the kids, when they get older, they can, they'll have now the tools to program it themselves. So we just think it's a, it's a move in the right direction. It's current, and it's going to help our students moving forward for when they go into the workforce or to college or to the military, they're going to have that background.
Yep, it sounds like a good thing. What's the average enrollment in each one of these classes?
So Lifetime, it varies, really. We've had as many as 40. We've had as few as 23, 24. It all comes down to really what, you know, what's available, who wants to take it. But we have had 40, 40 students in these, enrolled in these classes. It's a big group. It really is quite large, yeah.
Well, out of, how many are enrolled in high school? 3,000? That's a lot.
At North, we have, what was it, 18...
Something like that.
19, 1,800-ish, yeah. Yeah, and that number fluctuates.
And you only run one session, a quarter or semester?
No. So there are, we have three Phys Ed, like, right now at North, there are three teachers that teach Phys Ed. And sometimes we're all on, sometimes there's two of us on. There's always at least two, two on. And it's...
Boops of 40.
Sometimes. We've had as many as, bless you, we've had as many as 120 in the gyms at a time. And so our classroom management has to be spot-on. There's a lot of children. We don't sit at desks. We're moving.
Well, it's a good thing you're not sitting at your desk.
Absolutely right. But I'm just saying, from a, from a management standpoint...
Yeah.
From a management standpoint, it's, it's quite involved. There's a lot of classroom management that goes on. But anyone, anyone here is welcome to come in and see 120 kids actively working any day of the week. It's, it's pretty neat to see 120 kids going back and forth doing a dynamic warm-up. It's pretty cool. So, yeah.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Could nutrition be part of this program?
Right. So, one of the things we had talked about with our health program, because it, nutrition is touched on as a sophomore with the, with the Fit for Life and then the Health I curriculum, they talk about nutrition at that point. We certainly could dive into that. And we're, whereas we're just waiting to see if this passes, it's kind of like a, it's almost an organic document in that it's a living, breathing thing that we can add to or take from. Look at, we're, we're actually taking a trip to the University of New Hampshire on November 6th during the Professional Development Day to visit with their professors. We're trying to set up a partnership with them, with some of their student teachers. But they're going to show us how they use their health curriculum and intertwine it with their physical education program. So that's one of the things we're going to do on November 6th. I'm glad you asked that question. So definitely, we can, we can include the health aspect of it, eating healthy calories, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Wasn't our health class supposed to be, or program supposed to be rewritten lately? Or do I, am I confusing that with something else?
I know that in 2016, we got together as, as a department, and I believe I just sent that to Dr. McKinney, the, the health UBDs as we have them now, Understanding by Design, and all the things that, that those cover. So, 2016, pretty, pretty recent, pretty recent.
That's good, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions for the gentleman, Ms. Oden?
I'm sorry. And I have a hard time understanding block scheduling and how you fill things in with quarter, but I have heard a lot from band students and band parents that they have a hard time fitting Phys Ed into the schedule.
Right.
And many times, they've been advised to take it online.
Sure.
And is there any way this course might be able to be configured or adjusted so that those students might be able to learn, earn their credit through this rather than the option of online?
Sure. Well, first and foremost, let me say that I currently have those band and chorus students in class every other day for a semester in my Fit for Life class. And they're outstanding, and they're a great group of kids. Certainly, there are options. Again, as I mentioned earlier, and you just alluded to the fact that block scheduling is, you are limited in where, you know, where you can put students sometimes, and that's, no question, can be an issue. We tell students all the time that while taking an online course, a V-Lax course is a wonderful alternative, there's more to taking Phys Ed, I believe, than just exercising. There's interaction there. There's human interaction. We're not staring down at a device. We're not, it's the first time in a, in a young person's day where they can get up and move around and have conversation while being physically fit, or playing a game, or doing an activity, or walking the track. They can interact with folks. They can make eye contact with folks. And as wonderful a tool and alternative as V-Lax is, I oftentimes tell students that, you know, there's more to taking PE than just getting the stamp on the, you know, on a report card. That being said, I feel like that it does handcuff them in some regards, but since I've been here, and I was here when the building opened in 2004, we have always had those band students and chorus students on an AB schedule. And it's, it's always worked for me. The issue becomes it has to be a semester-long, not a, they have me for 45 days, but it has to be a semester in length because they're alternating those days. So you are missing some. But, you know, you have to determine, what, what do I want to take? We don't make them take four years of PE. We make them take a credit worth of PE. Freshman year, sophomore year, tech, they're done. Technically, they have the graduation requirement. They've met it. Lifetime I and Lifetime II are for those students that want to take it a bit further. And so that's, that's where we are in that regard. I, I don't know what the answer is to that. You'd have to talk to the folks that schedule the classes and the guidance counselors. Yeah.
Sure you may.
Madam Chair.
So, I just want to talk about the freshman gym because it is a challenge with band, and it's not, and music courses in general. And it's a challenge because they just can't fit everything in. So if they take music and Phys Ed, they couldn't fit in a word language because there's not enough room in the eight credits, eight periods a day. So that's really what the issue is. They'd have to make a choice there. So for freshmen, that's the challenge. For sophomores, we run it as an every-other-day course for them. So they can get their Phys Ed and, their Phys Ed and Health credit their sophomore year. And then their freshman year, they should, it's just, it's just a challenge. They have to make choices.
Right.
With their schedule. That's the hardest piece.
And that's life. That's, that's, that's life. That happens. And you, you know, there are young people that have to figure it out sometimes.
Dr. McKinney.
Could I just request, and courtesy to our guests that are here, we just stick to the course approvals for the program of studies, and then any scheduling questions we could ask at the end?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so that's all I have for the Lifetime, Lifetime II class. If there's no other questions on that, I can move on to the personal fitness class?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, we decided, again, that a personal fitness is designed for students to have an opportunity to improve their aerobic capacity. It's a low-impact class. Again, not focused on sports-based activities or games, but more a cardiovascular, heart-based activity for those students that might not necessarily like to be active in games. And it would take the place of a Fit for Life class. You would still have a Sport Education class, that's a prerequisite, but we believe that the students would greatly benefit from a moving period of their day. We are actually, and as I said earlier, there are a lot of districts that, that currently have a walking for wellness class, various, districts that are very similar to ours. The city of Manchester does a walking for wellness. Merrimack does walking for wellness. Londonderry. There are a lot of districts that are already doing this. So there are models in place. There are curriculums in place. We talked about buying heart rate monitors. We talked about getting pedometers. But there's, we really don't need much of anything other than the track, or the school building, or the areas outside the school to have this be a structured and very successful class. And I think it would be a very, very popular class with our students and very beneficial. It's almost, it's a lifetime activity, really, is what it is. And so it would take the place of a Fit for Life course, but it would run parallel to it.
Make them more alert, too.
No doubt. No question.
Sounds good to me. Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
Just two small things. One, I think it's fantastic that you're focusing on the kids who aren't necessarily team sport kids. That was 100% me when I was growing up. Nobody wanted me on their team. It was not helpful. But one tiny thing is in the first sentence, you have a typo.
Oh, I know, I do. It's me.
Okay, so you know it?
Oh, I do.
All right, that's it. So, that's all. I think it's great that you're adding this.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
Oh, there's a small typo. But if Ms. Koto has it, then we'll leave it in her hands.
And push-ups.
I'm going to walk around the block.
All right. All right. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. I'm looking for the typo. Oh, where's the English teacher's? Oh, improve?
So next, we have science. Naomi Hall.
That's the second line.
Yeah, second line.
Yeah. Science, you said?
Yes.
Oh, AP Physics?
Naomi Hall. Thank you. Good evening. We just have one request, and it's pertaining to AP Physics I. Right now, that is a semester class, and we would like to change that to a year-long course. We have a couple of reasons for that. The first one is the intent of College Board was for this to be a full-year course, and for this to be a full-year course. And it is equivalent to a semester-long college class. And our other AP Science courses are already a full year, and they also are equivalent to a semester in college. That would be our AP Chemistry, AP Biology, and AP Environmental Science. And then by changing this to a year, it would allow adequate time to complete the minimum required 12 labs. Right now, having this as a semester, there's really not enough time to cover the content and do the labs that are needed.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Raymond?
I'll just ask, do any, what do the surrounding districts do? Do they have this as a year-long class?
Majority of places have it as a year-long.
I recall it being a year-long class when I was in high school as well, so.
I only took it one semester. The other one was Biology, and then Physics. Oh, no, it was Chemistry and Physics, one of each.
Interesting.
Oh, it's 50, 60 years ago.
Right. Our other physics courses are a semester, and our chemistry are a semester, but when it's AP, they tend to be a year.
Oh, we didn't have AP. Maybe CP. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more. So I'm going to cover the Social Studies area. Our, one of our Social Studies teachers could not attend tonight. So this change for AP World Studies is really just a description change. The College Board has changed the content of the course, and they have just edited their description to follow along with the College Board.
Which one was that? I'm sorry.
That's the very last one.
The World History.
AP World.
Okay. We haven't done Introduction to Financial Services yet, right?
Yep, we'll get there.
All right.
I'll be next. Do you want, is there any questions about AP World? Okay. So now we'll head into CTE. Or NTC, I should say. Yep, I'm going to move down.
Dynamic Duo.
No, no, we have two chairs. You can solo see here. We just needed the chair where your purses were.
Plenty of room.
We're not kicking you out.
We wouldn't do that.
No.
Good evening.
Good evening. You're all set. You're all set.
Hi, everybody. So for NTC, the first new course we're proposing actually ran as an ELO this past year, and it's going to be called the Credit Union Internship at Nashua South. It's going to be located at the John Dark Credit Union, which is located on Main Street at Nashua South.
Wait, could you tell me what page you're on? One, two, three.
The credit one you were just asking about.
Introduction to Financial Services and Credit Union. Okay. Well, thank you.
So this new course will include basic principles and practices of credit unions and the financial industry. The students will be exposed to accounting, technology, cash handling, customer service skills, clerical and back office tasks, as they develop confidence under the guidance of a credit union professional. Some of the coursework skills will include comprehensive financial literacy education on a variety of topics such as debit cards, insurance, taxes, credit, credit reports, budgeting, and much more. After completion of the course, students will have a solid understanding of financial concepts and will possess employability skills, including cash handling, customer service standards, organization, and teamwork. This authentic learning permits the students to explore hands-on, real-life situations and problem-solving, coupled with independent practice. The students will get real-life experience working as a bank teller. As a matter of fact, one of our students last year who participated in the ELO actually got a part-time job at John Dark in Nashua. So it's our first success story, yes.
I have a question. Why is it so late in the lifetime of a student, grades 11 and 12?
Well, yeah, we kind of looked at, we kind of modeled it after our Career and Technical Education courses, where many of our students are able to take those classes as juniors and seniors. That's certainly something we can look at, you know, as time goes on. But, you know, we felt, too, that since it's an internship-type class, we wanted to give upperclassmen a shot at it first. But again, as this gets rolling, we certainly can make changes. Yeah, I do remember. Yeah, so what Amanda was saying, we first met with the credit union, John Dark, first out of the discussions when they came into the building. They were looking to tap into our upperclassmen. But as I said, as we get rolling with this, you know, we certainly can be malleable in making changes. Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Okay, thank you. Is there an age limitation? Is that reason why they want the upper grades? Because of their age?
I'm not exactly sure, but I do remember those conversations, that they did, you know, require upperclassmen at first.
And I think they were hoping it could feed into a career or, oh, sorry.
Mike?
I think they were hoping it could feed into a career or internships that summer, you know, from this, and they had to be a certain age in order to make that move.
I was wondering about that, whether they wanted you to train their new employees.
A little bit.
That's quite all right, though. That's what we're here for.
Well, and that's what happened to the student last year. So she did the ELO as a junior, and then this past summer, she worked at John Dark. So that's how it worked. Yeah.
It's good addition. Any other questions? Okay. Now, for the biggie. Well, yours was big, too. I didn't want it.
Yours was very important. So I think everyone will remember, last year, we received a grant to pilot the drone program, and that will start next quarter. It's going to run as a pilot program for three quarters. So we are proposing that next year, we turn that pilot into a course, and it will feed off, like I said, this year's pilot program. The course will introduce students to all the career pathways and multiple uses for drones. They'll engage with hands-on activities, team approach. So not every student would obviously need a drone. They would work in a team. And students will be exposed to the materials they would need to prepare for the FAA 107 test, which at 16, they're able to take that test and become professional drone operators and receive funds for their work. Because of the grant, our teacher is currently FAA 107 trained. She also has been working with Justin Kates, the Director of Emergency Management for the city of Nashua, and she's getting her FEMA training as well, and her certification. And we are partnering with ConVal, so we've already talked with ConVal because they're interested in bringing a drone course. We would be the first CTE center to have a drone course, but other centers are catching on, and they're interested. And we also have other teachers who are interested in potentially becoming drone teachers. So we would apply for another grant to train the trainer model, work with ConVal, open the opportunities up to our other teachers. And we had 50 students sign up for our introductory e-block rollout, and it was in this room. The teacher was flying the drone, and Pete Johnson was flying the drone. He's from Nashua TV, and he wants to partner with us. And just so you know, UNH and Southern New Hampshire University both have drone academies, so students can move forward with this. So our course proposal is drones and technology, I think.
And this is an indoor class?
No, it would be taught outdoors, so.
I was just going to say.
But they were able to fly it in here, and you could feel the air actually from the drones. They were so powerful, but they were able to maneuver them. The drones actually have built-in detection of obstacles, so they won't go. So what happens is, if you flew a drone and you lost sight, you can push the homing button, and it can come home to you and avoid power lines and trees and make its way all the way back to you. And it will do that automatically when the battery runs low.
I was going to ask you about liability. There's any liability to the school department for this?
Absolutely. So that's why we involved Justin Kates originally, to help us with insurance. So he is helping us get the additional insurance that we need and helping us figure out all those pieces. But one thing is, the drones will be capped, so they can't fly above 400 feet, I think, something like that. So they won't interfere with the airport in any way. So they can't even go into the flight zone or whatever.
A video of this would have been great.
We had, so on the TVs outside, we have photos and videos of, like, the students' first day of school, like, coming in, and we've been putting those up. So we would be happy to share those as soon as.
We can send videos over.
Yeah, as soon as they get up in the air, we'll, we'll share them.
ETV?
Yeah. Oh, yep, ETV.
That would be good marketing.
Absolutely.
Everybody would love to see that, I'm sure.
And right now, we're having the students one drone for three students, and it actually works out really well because a student needs to be flying, another student needs to be checking the air and, you know, making sure there's not obstacles, and then the third one needs to be manning the iPad that goes along with it and taking pictures or seeing what the drone sees. So three is not too many. Four would probably be too many for one drone.
Very good. Questions?
That's interesting.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
This is.
You're supposed to.
That's all right. This year, you said it's three quarters. What's the plan for next year? A year, a semester?
It would be a semester, and we'd start with one semester, the hope being that we would then train the trainer model and be able to roll it out at South, Nashua South as well, because we wouldn't want to just keep it. I mean, if it stayed at North, of course, South students can come over, but the ideal is that it would be offered at both schools. And Jeff Leone, so that's our video broadcasting CTE teacher, is very interested in learning more, maybe incorporating that into the video broadcasting class. So we want to share the wealth.
Could be flying little televisions around.
I know.
Watch it.
Agreed.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I had one more. What happened to Accounting One? Has that been gone for a while?
Did we?
It says, this new course, Drones and Technology, and then it says Previously Accounting One, right under it.
Oh, I have.
In the box. Okay. I'll just X that out.
They will now be learning accounting skills while flying.
It doesn't make sense to me.
That's okay.
So has been very, very busy with hiring people, so. Thank you. Dynamite. Dr.?
Mary Tockey?
Yes, thank you very much. He'll be, he'll be very excited. You could fly one over his house.
I think of him all the time whenever we do this because he was so passionate about it. So, yeah.
Okay. What's next?
We have more.
Oh, you have more?
Are we going to do math first?
Sure. You want me to do math?
We'll do math first.
Okay. So this, you don't really have literature on this, but I'm going to tell you about it. So we have an exciting thing to tell you about. So Nashua is part of a $50,000 grant that is a statewide grant. Seven CTE centers are participating, and they've gotten together to develop a feasibility study, a feasibility, the grant is for feasibility, to see if we can offer Algebra One credits in robotics, and to see if we can offer geometry credits in manufacturing machining, which we're so grateful that you guys, you know, got up and running. This study is being conducted by an independent third-party consultant. So Rob Lukasek, Lukasek, who is a former high school teacher, and he's president of the New Hampshire Math Teachers Association, and he partnered with Christine Morris, who is a full-time professor of math at Nashua Community College. So they're going to be going to all the centers, studying this, seeing if it's feasible, and bringing this feasibility study back to us. And I just want to reiterate that they are really committed to making sure that this math course is rigorous and transferable, because, you know, we would not want to have a dummy-down, for lack of a better word, math course. We want this to be Algebra One and geometry and have those competencies met.
Meet the rigor.
Yeah, meet the rigor. And the grant includes the feasibility study, and then we would run a one-year pilot course to see if it is doable, and then we report out to the Commissioner of Education. I would love to tell you the partners, if I'm not going on too long. Okay. So Wolfboro, Manchester, Newport, Exeter, Nashua, Keene, and the White Mountains are all the centers that are participating. We have math teachers in and out of district. We have involved the heads of the math departments, the Commissioner of Education, the Science Consultant for the Department of Education, the CTE directors at each of those named centers, a variety of CTE teachers, and really excitingly, Robo Matters, which if you know Vex Robotics or Project Lead the Way, they're the curriculum arm. They're actually bringing our teacher and the consultant down to Pittsburgh because they want to see if this is, they've studied this as well, and if it's feasible, they would love to have the curriculum up on their website and deploy it out to all centers for free. So I think that's all that we're, that's all I, unless you have questions. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm a little confused, too. So this $50,000 is for one person to do this, to involve all these in deciding whether Algebra One and, what was the other one?
Geometry.
And geometry, thanks. In the CTE program would be feasible.
Right, exactly. And if we could actually offer those Algebra One, like, Algebra One credit, and, oh, and I should say that Washington State already does this. They've been doing it since 2013. So there is a model to, we're not, you know, forging a whole new path. It has been successfully done.
Okay, so we've been talking about algebra and math courses in the CTE area, like for manufacturing and all the other things. So these would be geared towards those CTE
Exactly. So.
Programs.
So the idea would be that in that manufacturing machining course, we would have curriculum embedded in the course that would result in a geometry credit as well as that manufacturing machining credit. Or, as well, in the Vex Robotics class, the Algebra One would be embedded. So think of the robot as a manipulative, that the students would be learning about Algebra One using the robot, so very hands-on math. And this came about because I've been sitting on a math task force at the Department of Education, math communities, and then also part of the Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education at the state level. All across the state, parents are asking for more hands-on math opportunities, and Nashua's really piloting the way for this.
So Algebra One is a semester course in the regular program. Would this be a semester course? You said it would be embedded into the regular, it doesn't sound like it's enough time for.
It would be a year-long.
So it would be a year-long course.
A year-long course.
Yep. So the Vex Robotics and the Algebra would be a year-long course to make sure that you meet all the competencies for Algebra One.
Okay, so they're not going to, they're not going to make a subset of Algebra One or a short period of, okay, that sounds good.
No, we're looking to make sure that all the competencies are hit. Rob Lukasek's currently looking at all the UBD documents to make sure that, you know, everything falls in line, and that kids get that rigor, the hands-on experience, but with enough rigor to say that they're competent in Algebra One.
Sounds like a good move. Very good move. Any questions? Well, we'll be glad to hear the results of that, whatever you said.
Feasibility.
Feasibility, thank you. It's tough getting old.
There you go, Mike.
And finally, the last thing that we'd like to discuss is a plan for our ELL students. Amanda and I are very passionate about providing equity and access to our ELL population, looking for ways to get them involved in our programs and so forth. So we're planning to run a pilot program at North in January for ELL students. And again, it'll start at North. One of the teachers that we have at North is a TechEd certified teacher, who currently is taking ELL classes to become certified in ELL as well, in his specialties of power mechanics, electricity, electronics, woodworking. And as we started to talk about this, we thought, what a great opportunity for all of our students, but especially our ELL students who don't get a lot of these opportunities. They don't have access to these programs. And so as it works out, we have an opportunity next semester for a first-block class where the students will be allowed to, 10 to 15 students will be allowed to take his class and to go through the competencies of TechEd. The difficult thing with a lot of these students, unfortunately, is because of the language barrier, they are unable to take many of our core classes, and many of them get put into, you know, a drawing class or a Phys Ed class, you know, time and, time and again. And this, we believe, you know, is, again, trying to think outside the box and trying to give them those opportunities they otherwise wouldn't have. And, you know, we're starting small. We're looking at identifying 10 to 15 students who could benefit from this. We're leaning on the ELL department to help us identify those students and, you know, and hopefully get the program up and running as a pilot. And then, you know, hopefully next year, as it gets rolling, we can roll it out at both schools.
Right, and we're hoping it would culminate, I'm sorry, and then we're hopeful that it would culminate in a tour of the CTE centers at both schools. So the students would have that safety training and experience, and then they would be able to see what the centers offer at both schools. And this was also grant-funded. It won't cost, well, we're triple-checking, but we won't run it.
Yep.
Unless we can make sure it's paid for through our grants.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Very good point. I forget to ask about money every once in a while. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I have a question regarding how you're marketing this, because you're starting in January.
in January this coming year. How's being marketed, and how are you going to get these students to, to buy into it? Because that's a, that's a tough call there.
It's a great question. I think it being a pilot, we're going to lean on the ELL department at North to identify kids who would benefit this year, to get us some data on how well they perform in the program, and, and go from there. So, we're not going to be doing a lot of marketing to, to get the kids in the class this year. It's not, you know, in your program of studies, so, you know. But the hope is, we'll, you know, see how, you know, see how they progress with the program, and next year, roll it out, and then, you know, fully market it.
Right, and, and Mike and I, I think we were sharing this already, but we went down to the middle schools to, or to middle, Mike has been going to the middle schools. Last Friday, we went to Elm Street and spoke specifically to the ELL parents about the offerings at NTC. In addition, we've been going into the ELL classrooms and speaking with the ELL students directly, and the feedback from the teachers and the students and the parents is they really want to get on board with our programs. They just don't know about them. So, that's what's so great about what you're saying, Gloria.
And some of the things that, to prepare us at South, some of the things that we're doing, we have some program called the Virtual Job Shadow, which is a career inventory which gets the kids building resumes, has videos of all kinds of careers, translates into all kinds of languages, so it's very user-friendly. And, you know, from the kid's interest, and once we gauge their interests, we're going to give, you know, send them on tours of our programs. And then, again, the hope next year is that, you know, we can bring this to South as well.
Do you mind if I say one more thing? And I think one of the, this grew from the board recognizing that we want to incorporate ELL students, but sometimes safety can be an issue. So, that would be one of the big coverings for this course, would be how to be safe in these classrooms that can sometimes be, you know, dangerous for anyone, let alone if you don't speak the language. We could talk about this all night, so any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
Nope, sounds good. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I have a feeling that pretty soon, we're going to have to start pumping the other way about going to college, where you guys are going.
Well, CTE is college and career.
College and career.
Remember that.
It's, yeah, we want to make sure kids have, identify, can identify multiple pathways, college, career, whatever suits them, in their families.
Well, you're doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you finished?
Yep, I'll land.
Okay, so I guess you want a motion, huh?
Yes.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the Footsteps for 2019-2020.
Second?
Do you need someone to say the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I thought you was moving it.
No, I, I said the chair would entertain a motion.
I'll say it. I move that we accept the course additions and changes in the Footsteps Program of Studies for 2019-2020.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Did that incorporate everything you need? Okay.
The whole, okay, yes.
Is there any discussion further? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. This will come, yeah, make sure it gets out on time. We will bring this forth at the next board meeting for approval by the full board. Bye, Mike. Okay, so a motion to accept footprints, footsteps, and CTE. Heather? Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the SAT discussion. What are we discussing?
So, I believe there was a question regarding the SAT questionnaire and the, the types of questions that were asked of students, if I'm correct, and Mrs. Koutou came with information to share with the board.
So, it's called the Student Search Service, and students, it's voluntary. Students sign up for the Student Search Service when they register for the SAT. And once they check yes, there's a lot of questions to ask. They might be, you know, what grade are you in? What, what is your interest for a career? What are your grades? What, all kinds of different things. What's your, what's your, what classes are you currently taking? So, they'll ask them a lot of different questions, and what the results will do is give them lots of information on colleges and scholarships. So, signing up isn't going to hurt them, it's just going to give them more information about colleges and scholarships.
Is there a charge for it?
No charge.
No charge? Oh, yeah, I was thinking, I'm sorry. Ms. Timmons and then Ms. Raymond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in that process right now. I have a 12th grader, and we're looking at colleges as well, and we're talking about the SAT. Now, she took the pre-SAT.
Yep.
And I'm saying to her, when are you taking the SATs?
Soon.
Soon. She said that, but I like, I don't want her to miss it. But the discussion on colleges and footprints and all this stuff, I'm involved a lot in their education, so I really like to attend some of those discussions, if all possible.
At this point, we've done our, our college presentation. We did it in September, I think beginning of September, I don't remember the date offhand, but we are having a financial aid workshop coming up soon. If you check our website, all of our information is listed there, all our, our dates for presentations. But if you need help, I would say meet with your child's guidance counselor.
We have an appointment coming up anyway.
Yeah, good. That's exactly what you should do.
So, it's just that we're just so involved in that right now.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of work, and I just, I have one just in BU right now. We went through that last year, and now we're going through, but her mother was more involved.
Overwhelming.
But this, this parent is involved as well, but not like my daughter's like, boom, boom.
Yeah.
And the other one's like, okay, why don't you go along with her? So, that's why I'm asking these questions, because we are in the process of doing just that for the second one.
Yeah.
And then again, next year, the following year. So, that's great, and this is really wonderful, and I would love to see those questions that you guys asked.
Yeah, I, it's all electronic, so I'm not able to log on to the call...
Was she would, was she be able to...
She would be able to see them. So, when she, you register for the SAT, you do this online.
Right.
And all of the questions are there. So, they would just, you know, check that they want to be involved in Student Search, and then complete the questionnaire. They don't have, if there's a question they don't want to answer, they don't have to answer it. It's not going to omit them from being in Student Search. And then colleges will get their information, and we'll send it out. They won't get their actual, well, they will get their actual SAT scores, but they'll send them information that is pertinent to the student. So, it might be, you know, their press kit, it could be scholarship information, so.
One other question, Madam Chair. Is it too late for early registration?
Not for all colleges. November 15th is probably our most important date, but November, there are some November 1st deadlines, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I was just curious, is this a new service? I feel like it's not.
No, it's been, it was there when I applied to college. Actually, I found the school I went to through Student Search.
Right. I seem to recall the bubbles back way back then.
Yeah, lots of bubbles.
Yeah. And then, Ms. Timmons' question made me think, you said, is it File a FAFSA? Do they do File a FAFSA nights?
We do. We don't actually file the FAFSA, but we talk a lot about it. And then NEITH, the New Hampshire Association of College Admissions, something to that end, they do filing nights with families in their, at their Concord office. So, families would have to go there. We used to do filing nights at the schools, but we didn't get great attendance.
But the information session you said is on the website?
Yes.
Fantastic. Could you give that exact location on the website?
Under Guidance. If you click on Guidance under the South, you can go under South or North, and then you'll see on the side our current events. Our current events are what is going to pop up first, and it would just give all of our current dates of what's happening in Guidance. So, for the year, basically, things have been booked.
Wonderful.
So, the Guidance is on the main menu?
Yep, main menu.
For either school?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Oden?
Yes, I, I believe I was the one that asked about this. What I had read is that there are some of those questions that students have to answer, but there are some that they do not have to answer. And as you know, what, what technology is doing is taking a whole lot of data and putting it together, and maybe selling them things that they're really not interested in, or that the data says maybe they're interested in. But I believe there's a 12 or 14-page document pertaining to the SATs and the questions that they ask in there. And that's what I was concerned about. Are we letting students know that there are certain questions in there that they do not have to answer because of the data collection and what companies can do with that data?
So, when we offer the PSAT or AP tests, everything that's offered by College Board has a connection to Student Search. So, at any time student takes, students take a test through the College Board, they can sign up for Student Search. So, when we have opportunities to talk to students, like at the PSAT at our school, we tell them that they don't have to sign up for Search, they don't have to answer the questions. But if they're signing up for the SAT outside of school, because it's an online service, they don't do it usually in school, we don't have access to them. But we do talk about it, we do our college meetings with students.
My understanding, from what I remember, and I don't have the article in front of me, but when a state requires the SAT to be used, that's when it's necessary to let students know that they do not have to answer all the questions. And I just want to make sure our, our families knew about that, because I think it's kind of scary, the way data is being used, and it's very, it can be very invasive. It can be very helpful, but it, you know, businesses and, and other entities are making a lot of use of that data, and sometimes it's data that you don't, you don't want to share.
Sure.
Or you don't need to share. And I think what's important to me is that we let our, our students and our families know that there's certain questions in there. Some you do have to answer, was, was what I had read, but there are questions in the SAT that you do not have to answer, and I just want people to know that.
Yes, I believe the questions they do not have to answer are the Student Search piece. Most of the questions are basically what grade you're in, what's your date of birth, what's your school code, codes for your colleges, so they can send the tests. The Student Search that are very individual questions to the student directly, that's voluntary, completely voluntary.
But do we let them know? Do we make it a point of saying, these questions here, you do not have to answer, and we will still get your SAT score, and it will still be sent to your school?
Yeah, I'm not, I can't, I can't speak to that, but I can make sure, going forward, we make sure we do that.
Okay, that's what I'm interested in. Thank you.
Okay.
Does the application itself indicate on the question whether it's voluntary or not? Or if, if they don't answer a mandatory one, that it comes back and say, we need this one, or?
No, no. It basically tells them what, it's a little box. It tells them what Student Search is, and it's a check yes or no. So, students can decide from reading the box if they want to sign up or don't. A lot of students do, I think because they think they have to.
I mean, the individual questions that they ask.
It's a lot. It's a lot. It takes a while to get through them all.
Well, I know, but it...
I don't know how many is, they've asked, because I can't sign on unless I create a fake account.
Well, well, let's do that.
Okay.
Let's have a little fun. I'm all for that, because, well, I don't know what the questions are, but I don't like getting emails and whatever, on, on, you know, that I don't have any interest in, so.
I don't think that it's terrible information. It's basically college information, so the college press kit, and then scholarship information. So, it's...
Yeah, unfortunately, we live in an age of information, and makes the world go around.
One other question.
Yeah.
Madam President. You said that she did, my granddaughter did take the pre-SATs.
Yes.
Was that discussion on the pre-SATs or just the SATs?
I believe they can sign up for Student Search on the SAT, the PSAT, and the AP. I'm definite about AP and SAT. I'm not sure about PSAT, but I'm almost positive they can sign up for it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, you may.
I'm just going to reach out with Mrs. Fitzpatrick at our regional assistant superintendent meetings, and reach out to the College Board and the Department of Education around the questionnaire, and what the perspective from their, those two organizations are. So, I'll bring that to a next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it? Thank you, Ms. Koutou.
Thank you.
For taking your time out of your busy life to come here. It's good to see all the teachers, too. I love that. Vaping.
Vaping.
And health curriculum. Oh, that might tell us something about the course I was thinking about. I heard, I heard a presentation on the radio about this, and I'm glad that you brought it up, Mrs. Oden. It's, uh, interesting, very interesting. Are you going to speak about it?
So, when you, again, this is another concern, I believe that came from the board president. So, if you want to frame your concern, and then I have some information to share. So, I think, go ahead.
What, what I was concerned about, it, it's a, a big problem everywhere. I, I wanted to know what we're doing in our health curriculum to educate our students. And when students are vaping, sometimes it can be, from what I've read, the fruit juices, or they smell fruity, these things that, I guess, when they're heated, from what I've read, can turn into toxins. And what's, how do they tell the difference from when there might be an illegal drug in there, as opposed to these fruits? And what are the consequences for our students who are found using these in the school? I know we have eliminated, basically eliminated smoking, but now we're coming back into this. And from everything I've read, there are students who do not smoke, have not smoked, and are start, are vaping, and the number of students vaping is much higher than we had of students smoking. And a lot of parents are not aware of this. I know, I have an article here, and I didn't have a chance to run this one off. Pinkerton Academy just last week had a forum for parents and students. They had a poison control educator and a pediatrician to speak extensively about vaping and its increased popularity among students who may not understand the dangers. So, I, I want to know what Nashua is doing for our students and for our families to educate them, and to understand what the consequences are when students are vaping, because if, from, from everything I've read, it's a problem basically everywhere. I, I know other New England states are having very serious problems with it, too. So, I just want to see what we're doing, and I want to see what we're doing to educate our, our students and our families, and what consequences students are facing with this.
So, Jason Robey, who was sitting here, he and I have been talking. So, there are health units at the middle and the high school that cover vaping in their drug and alcohol units, and they use resources, PowerPoints, print articles, group discussions, and they do bring in some guest speakers. In speaking with him, he does feel that the teachers and the, the UBD units that they're working from could use some updating with some content specific to vaping, because this is a newer kind of piece here. Some of the teachers are also asking for some professional development. So, we've partnered in the past with the Department of Public Health. They've done a presentation for admin, so I can arrange for them to come and speak with the teachers. But he'd like some opportunity to work with either ETV or video production, and do some more kind of broader campaign informational awareness for kids of the risks involved, because I don't think everybody's completely clear on that. And he's completely willing to partner with organizations on doing forums with some medical expertise, because that's not something that all of our teachers necessarily bring. So, I think if we could have an opportunity to work together and put something together, and I could provide an update, I think, Madam Chair... and I could provide an update, I think, Madam Chair, I think what you were thinking of is, we also have in the curriculum budget, some more instructional materials for health, so we're trying to target materials that are up to date, 'cause right now, a lot of this is online, and teachers are kinda searching, so we're trying to find a more informative resource that we can provide at the middle and the high school level that speak to vaping. So I think we have some answers in the direction we wanna go, but it's an evolving kind of field of work, so we have to get going on it quickly, so.
Yeah.
I, I wanna thank you, and I certainly will support all this. I have a, a newspaper, and it, into the sporting section, half of the page is advertising vaping, where you can buy it, what kinds, and what's so deceiving of it, about this, the, the instruments that deliver it look like USB ports, or somebody told me they have some that look like erasers, that parents wouldn't even realize what, what it is, and I guess the fruit makes students think that it's not harmful, and it, it doesn't have the same odor as a cigarette. It's, they've, they've made it so it's a very light odor now, and our, our kids are just getting sucked into it. Originally, the cigarettes were designed to help people stop smoking, but now students that have never smoked are starting to vape, and it is, it is something that is addictive. So I, you know, the sooner we get going on this, I remember speaking to a teacher about cell phones, and they said, you know, it's gone on for so long that it's a habit, you, you can't break it now, and I don't want this to become like cell phones. I think it's serious, not just here in Nashua, but everywhere, and I think we need to be proactive rather than reactive.
This program I heard was on WSMN radio, and I think it was Sunday morning, and if I can find it again, but it, it does have nicotine in it, those vapors, some of them vapes, whatever you call them, do have nicotine on them, and they're banned, like cig, they should be banned like cigarettes. It's not, it's not as, I don't know.
Harmless?
Yeah, as people think. And like you said, I, they mentioned something about the fruit smell, too, and there are devices that they can swap whatever's in there for something better, or different, or more enjoyable, whatever. So I think that, and I, I thought this was a, kind of a local guy that did it, because I think he mentioned North. I was surprised that that, you know, was going on, so. If I can find it again, that program, I'll, I'll send it out. But it's, it's getting to be a problem.
Can I ask Dr. McKinney, do you know, is there a way, when, when a student is found vaping, is there a way to tell whether it is a nicotine-type thing or a drug issue, because there are different consequences for, for things like that?
Unfortunately, one of the benefits of being in elementary is I don't know the answer to that, so I'd have to reach out to the middle and high school in that regard. I'm, it's not my thing, but I could find out for them, as well as your questions around, you know, discipline and follow-up, I would assume those are per policy, per handbook, and then they outline the consequences for that, but I could find those out.
And, and when you're doing that, might we be able to get some numbers as to how many students have been disciplined in those matters?
Like a number of infractions?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Maybe Ms. Fitzpatrick could deal with it, too, since she's got the problem schools. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'm pretty naive to vaping, really naive. I know absolutely nothing about it, but I do know that cigarettes, you have to be a certain age.
That's the other point, yes, 18 with cigarettes, so.
So the age for vaping is 18 as well? I'm not, I'm totally, is it?
I don't know.
It's 18.
Sorry to speak on a turn, it's 18.
Yeah.
To, to purchase the things that go into the vaping, I don't recall seeing an age limit for purchasing the vaping supplies. Much like, you know, when I was a kid, kids would buy, you know, marijuana accessories, but you couldn't buy marijuana legally at any age, but the accessories, you could go into whatever store and buy. So I don't know off the top of my head, and I did look up quite a bit of the laws surrounding this in preparation for this discussion.
Well, I mean, that should answer one of Mrs. Oden's questions about 18, they're illegal to be in the school, so the vapors would be illegal, too, and they should be disciplined for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
What, what I've read is they're very easy for kids to obtain. It, it's not an age thing, that they're, the friends buy them for them, they, they are easily accessible to all the students. That's what I, I've read in, in just about every article.
Also reached out to the Nashville Police Department, we've also reached out to them because of the, much like this, the rapid advancement in technology and social media, and the kids' ability to create and duplicate accounts, ghost accounts, and they have access to technology that we don't really even know the lingo, so we're gonna have a workshop on that as well.
Oh, good.
Don't ask, I won't be able to explain the lingo, but I can share the literature.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I just have a couple of things that I looked up on this. So one of the things that Mrs. Oden had asked about was, you know, consequences and policies. I don't have the student handbook in front of me, so, and I don't remember, like, what the specific consequence is, if it's detention, or suspension, or whatever. I know if they're caught with an illegal substance, then there's specific actions, including potentially calling the, the Nashua PD, but tobacco, we don't usually call, even though they're not supposed to have it till they're 18. But the policy that we have that refers to this is JICG, which is Regarding Tobacco-Free Schools, but it doesn't say anything about vaping. It specifically refers to products containing tobacco. And so one could argue that vaping has nicotine, and so it will be covered. I don't know that I completely agree with that interpretation, because some of the vaping doesn't have any nicotine or any tobacco. And then I think the, the whole issue of using, like, the marijuana honey would fall under our other drug policies.
Look under the behavior policy?
Yep.
And whatever applies for cigarettes would apply for vaping if it's 18 years of age.
Yeah, one would think, but it, it, it's very specific, it says tobacco and drugs. So, I don't know if that's something that, that the school admin feels is sufficient or not.
Okay, anything else? How about you, Mr. Dr. McKinney? You have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I do have one other question.
Yes?
And that is, should we change that policy to include vaping? Or that's what, that's our next step?
Yep.
To cover that particular issue?
I would think so. I would think so.
So I'm happy to refer that to, put it on a, a policy agenda. I'm wondering if we should wait for that information back from Dr. McKinney, so that we have that?
Well, depends on, on, you know, when he gets it back to us.
Right.
I mean, we haven't heard about the SAS scores, they've been two, two topics that got bumped from this meeting.
That's correct.
And we've only got two more meetings left before the end of the year, so I don't know that you should, well, I don't know, it's up to you.
I believe we could do it by year-end.
Yeah, I think perhaps-
I think we can do both at the same time, sorry.
Well, that's okay, I think perhaps what I'll do is I'll send an email to Ms. Fitzpatrick and Dr. McKinney, and, you know, get some feedback from Ms. Fitzpatrick about what else she's got coming up for policy, and then maybe we'll try and figure out how to get it on in the next couple months, if that's acceptable to everyone.
Yep. If there is nothing else, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Me, too. That's second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are now adjourned at 7:25.